Okay, good evening, everyone. Again, welcome to tonight's Goals and Guardrails Town Hall with the Board of Education. A reminder that there will be a presentation at the beginning and then we will end with a question and answer session. So if you have a question, please submit your question using the Q and A function at the bottom of the Zoom menu. It is now 5:34, and so we're going to get started. Thank you again for joining us for this very important and exciting event. I'm going to hand it over to Student Board Representative Kaylisha Diaz to kick us off. Kaylisha?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kaylisha Diaz, and I am one of your Student Board Representatives for this school year. I'm joined tonight by my fellow Student Board Representative, Tolu Waneme Olaleye. Additionally, I'd like to introduce to you members of the Board of Education. Board President Wilkerson, Board Member Danzi, Board Member Huang, Board Member McIver, Board Member McLoughan, Vice President Ahia Hinton, and Board Member Fix Lopez, who is unable to join us this evening. Thank you for, thank you, everyone, for joining us today to discuss the Board's education plan to ensure that every public school student is learning and reaching their fullest potential. Board Member Wong and Board Member McIver will spend the few, first few minutes of this meeting sharing some exciting information with you about their, about the board, their role, and their vision for public education in the city. After the presentation, we will answer questions that you have submitted using the Q and A feature. On the screen below, you will see a Q and A button, which will allow you to submit any questions as we go through the presentation. So let's begin.
Thank you, Kaylisha and Tolu. My name is Lee Huang. As Kaylisha introduced us, we are members of your Board of Education, and we're thrilled to be here with you today. Each of us was appointed by the mayor and confirmed by City Council in order to serve together as the governing body of the School District of Philadelphia. Our main role is to be the voice of Philadelphia by setting a vision for the school district. We're proud of the progress made by our scholars despite all of the challenging circumstances we've faced as a district. We've increased the number of high-performing schools in our district, and our four-year graduation rate has increased. Yet, there is so much more to accomplish. We're also proud of our two Student Board Representatives, Kaylisha and Tolu, who've been working hard to ensure we capture student voice as part of this process. As a board, our main focus and purpose is to improve student achievement and success across the district. Everything we do must be focused on ensuring each and every one of you has the tools you need to reach your highest potential. That's our vision for the district, and we'll be holding the superintendent and district accountable for ensuring that we meet this vision. The PowerPoint presentation that we're about to share with you focuses on student achievement within the district, how that achievement compares to other large districts across the country, and how we plan to improve student achievement and empower each student to succeed through goals and guardrails. The Board of Education was put in place two years ago, and we've been hard at work since that time. We've been meeting with communities across the city, visiting dozens of Philadelphia schools, holding dozens of meetings, and working with our two Student Board Representatives to bring student voice to all that we do. Now, after a momentous and difficult two years marked by environmental safety issues, the coronavirus pandemic, and protests calling for a national commitment to the statement Black Lives Matter, we believe we are at a decisive moment to propel positive change in our schools. We've developed a plan to drive that change and to live and to deliver on the promise of local control.
As the board begins its second term, great work has been done to shift the board's focus to student outcomes and achievement. Tolu and I have worked hard the past two months to increase, to increase the student voice and make sure that our thoughts, concerns, and experience are heavily considered in this decision-making process.
Our plan is simple because it starts with the most basic question. Why do our schools exist? The answer is that our schools exist to provide every student with the tools and experiences they need to reach their fullest potential. As a board, our role is to focus on this vision and to hold the district accountable for fulfilling this purpose. A focus on student learning and student success must guide everything we do. Board members have a duty to ensure that everything relates to our children achieving.
The board's plan is simple. The board has developed goals and guardrails focused on ensuring that each and every one of us attended a school that is committed to our success and provides a nurturing school environment where this can occur. The board's primary purpose is to ensure our success. This means that they must be focused on creating school environments that are safe and healthy, and we, as students, can learn to our fullest potential. As a Student Board Representative, as Student Board Representatives, we feel it is very important that every student throughout the district is aware of the goals and guardrails, and that we hold ourselves, our teachers, and our principals accountable for helping us achieve these goals.
For nearly 20 years, our district has not had this focus. We've been in system survival mode, contending with state control and financial instability. While our district is making strides in some areas, such as increasing the number of high-performing schools, reducing the number of low-performing schools, and increasing the four-year graduation rate, we need to look honestly at where we are and ask whether this is enough. No matter how we look at this, the answer is no. For example, on every measure possible, Philadelphia ranks at the bottom of large urban school districts on national reviews, as noted in the Nation's Report Card, published by the National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's time to move past system survival mode and into a world where we're focused on the success of all of our students.
This focus is very important for the board and the school district. As we all know, there are many things that we would like to see changed within our schools, which include our school's cultures, building conditions, and even cafeteria meals. But the most important thing and the reason that we often even attend our schools is to receive a quality education and be prepared for our adult lives. As students, we believe it is our job to take ownership of these goals and guardrails, since we will be the ones to be impacted by them the most.
While we're very proud of the progress we've made, the data on this slide and the next slide shows we still have room for improvement. In fourth grade math, we see that 19 districts performed significantly better, five not significantly different, and two significantly lower. In fourth grade reading, we find that 16 districts performed significantly better, with nine not significantly different, and one significantly lower. Similarly, the next slide looks at student performance in eighth grade. We know these numbers are hard to look at, and we want to be clear, they don't reflect any one student group or school. Instead, they tell us that overall, our system is not performing. This slide shows that in eighth grade math, we see that 16 districts performed significantly higher, five were not significantly different, and five were significantly lower. In eighth grade reading, we find that 16 districts performed significantly higher, nine were not significantly different, and one was significantly lower. We all know that our students in Philadelphia are the best in the country. We want to make sure that our school system reflects that. We want to ensure that we're creating the right learning environment so that your teachers and principals can focus on your success. This is why the goals and guardrails are so important to us.
I have seen what my fellow classmates are capable of. I know we can accomplish great things when we are able to focus on our learning and goals. I think the goals and guardrails are a great start at moving us forward as we, as a district, ensuring that students are focused on the job that we are given, which is to learn and achieve. I am excited to see the board's focus on these goals and guardrails so that could, so that they can remove all the distractions that keep us from learning.
To make sure that all of our students are reaching their fullest potential, the board is committing to a vision that ensures all students are given an education that allows them to thrive, succeed, and lead in a global society. And this will include making the changes necessary to provide our students, educators, and leaders with the tools to make this vision real. How do we turn this vision into reality? Number one, put student learning first and set clear student learning goals for the district. Our new goals are our destination. We are telling Dr. Height and our community exactly where we want to go and when. Dr. Height and the district are driving the car. They make the policies and decisions, so long as they're helping our students reach the goals. Number two, while the goals are critical, how we get to them matters. For this reason, the board has created clear guardrails that are our boundaries for Dr. Height. They are our non-negotiable conditions, and they represent our community's values. For example, in our work, it has been, it has become clear to us that an education that is not well-rounded with integrated arts and athletics is not an education that is worthy of our students. You will see this in our guardrails. The guardrails aren't just boundaries, they're also guideposts. We don't believe it's possible to have student success without providing every student with these conditions. Finally, we're going to make these goals and guardrails our stake in the ground. We intend to bring our full focus into ensuring that our system is moving forward on each of these items.
As stated earlier, the board's primary purpose is to ensure our success. This means that they must be focused on creating school environments that are safe, healthy, and we, as students, can learn to our fullest potential. As Student Board Representatives, we feel it is important that every student throughout the district is aware of the goals and guardrails that we hold ourselves, our teachers, and our principals accounting, accountable for helping us achieve these goals.
I'm very sorry, I was talking, and I have to start over again. Thank you, Kaylisha, and Board Member Huang. My name is Joyce, my name is Angela McHyper. I am a board member. I will be running through the rest of the presentation with our help of our second student representative, Tolu. We've developed straightforward goals in three key areas: reading, math and, math and college and career readiness. We've also developed guardrails, or the non-negotiable conditions that must exist in schools in order to reach our goals. The board will be keenly focused on monitoring the progress of these goals and guardrails for the next five years, and all board decisions and actions will relate to goals and guardrails.
To summarize, the goals are focused on key skills that we all need to master in order to reach our potential: reading, math, and being college or career-ready. On the other hand, the guardrails are focused on things that need to happen in order for us to be successful in reaching those goals. These are things that need to take place system-wide in every school to create school climates and environments and cultures that are positive and safe spaces for all students to learn in.
Goal one is that every student is reading on or above grade level because reading is a bedrock skill that leads to success in school, college, the workplace, and life. Goal two is having every student perform on or above grade level in math. This is critical because students need a strong foundation in math in order to access higher levels of learning in middle and high school grades and to eventually succeed in diverse careers. Goal three is ensuring that every student graduate is ready for college and careers. Students must have the core academic knowledge and opportunity of experience that will prepare them for post-secondary success in life. We've developed guardrails, or the non-negotiable conditions that must exist in our schools in order to reach our goals. The guardrails focus on four core areas: welcoming and supportive schools, enriching and well-rounded school experiences, partnering with parents, and addressing racist practices that cause disparate impact for our students across our school system.
Again, we should think about these guardrails as the things we need to make sure happen in our schools in order for us to achieve the reading, math, and college and career goals. Ensuring that we have an inclusive and safe school environment where we can focus on learning would be the key to our success.
Guardrail one is creating welcoming and supportive schools with clean, safe environments and inclusive climates that offer students access to robust social, emotional, and mental health supports. Guardrail two is providing students with enriching and well-rounded student experiences with co-curricular opportunities such as arts and athletics integrated into their school experience. Guardrail three ensures that we partner with parents and family members and welcome them into our children's school community. Guardrail four acknowledges that there are inherently racist and disparate impact practices that exist in our school system, and that we must evaluate and revise all district policies and practices to dismantle these practices that hinder our students' achievement. We must focus on equity in everything we do. So what does all of this mean? This focus on student success and these goals and guardrails will guide our work going forward. We will be dedicating a significant amount of our time at our board meetings to review progress on these goals and guardrails. It will be the superintendent and the district's responsibility to develop and implement strategies to achieve the goals and guardrails. We believe that this shift will drive real positive change in our schools. In December, we will adopt these goals and guardrails formally, and in the new year, you will begin to see us monitor progress each month.
And that is the end of our presentation. We want to use the rest of our time to hear your questions and comments. As a reminder, please, please use the Q and A button to submit your questions. Mr. Northam will be reading questions out loud, and board members will respond to as many as we can get to in the time we have left. While we wait to have you type up your questions, I want to summarize the information that was shared today and share some comments and questions that Kaylisha and I had on this work. The goals are focused on key skills that we all need to master in order to reach our potential: reading, math, and being college or career-ready. On the other hand, the guardrails are focused on things that we need to happen in order for us to be successful in reaching those goals. These are things that need to take place system-wide in every school to create school climates slash environments and cultures that are positive and safe spaces for all students to learn in. Some things that we thought about were: how can we use our voice as students to support and elevate this work? What are things that we want the board to know and be thinking about as they make this shift in their focus? We think it is important that the board know that we want to succeed and that we are committed to our success. Kaylisha and I believe that the goals and guardrails presented today are essential to ensuring that our schools properly support us in reaching our fullest potential and achieving our own goals. As students, we have to hold ourselves to a high standard and expectation and demand the same standards from the adults around us. Thank you. I will now ask Mr. Northam to read out loud our first question.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll, with that, we will start our question and answer session. And a reminder, if you do have a question, please use the Q and A feature at the bottom of your Zoom menu. The first question that we have for the board members: how will the board monitor the district's progress toward and fulfillment of these goals and guardrails?
President Wilkerson, do you want to take that one?
Sure. So the board has, has been thinking hard about the kinds of factors that indicate whether or not the district is making progress towards the goals. For example, with some of the guardrails, we're asking, asking about what we learned from the surveys of parents, teachers, and students. So we're going to be asking in those surveys, do the students really think the schools are safe and clean? And we'll be using those kinds of, the information we get from those surveys to gauge whether or not the district is making progress. So we expect that in year one, we might see 30% of the students thinking the schools are safe and supportive. That means the next year, we're going to be looking for progress. And we asked the question, the next year, we're going to want to see 40 or 50% of the students think the buildings are safe. So we have specific numbers that we're going to be using to gauge whether or not the district is making progress. At each of our board meetings, we're going to be monitoring goals, whether or not students are doing better in their reading and math, and we're going to be asking the same kind of things about guardrails. So we have five years' worth of monitoring that we're going to be doing at every board, we'll be monitoring at every board meeting. Hopefully, that's clear.
Thank you. The second question, unless anybody wants to add, doesn't look like anybody's wants to add. Okay, the second question is, what does this mean for students? What, what's going to look different at school? So it's a two-part question. What does this mean for students, and what will look different at our schools?
So I'd like to say, I'll say a couple of things. So, you know, immediately, you know, tomorrow, the day after we roll this out, it may not look completely different. It's really how we're going to be thinking about it and approaching things with a goal in the next one to five years of reaching targets that are lofty, lofty goals, so that we help every child have the opportunity and an excellent school in the neighborhood where they live, or access to other schools that they might be interested in, so that you can have everything you need to reach your fullest potential. And so that's the goal of this. We hope that students will get involved in this process, will ask their own questions the same way you are doing so today. And so what we expect to see is a change in the way everyone thinks about education in Philadelphia, and to raise the standards and expectations to let every student know that, you know, you are capable, you are able, and we, again, want to make sure that everyone has the same opportunity.
May I, I want to add to that because I, I think that there are places where this will become evident to, hopefully, this will become evident to students, you know, after implementation, and it really comes through the guardrails, that we want to make sure that every student is attending a school that they want, that they, where they want to attend and feel like they can learn in and are, are attending a school that has an environment that allows them to grow and succeed. We also want to make sure that every school has the kinds of co-curricular supports that develop students into the, into the adults that you will become. And it's not just about math and reading, but it's, it's about developing you as a whole person. And so the fact that as a board, we're looking, we're looking at that, will make an impact on what schools choose to do and how they choose to, to what resources they provide to students. And I think that those are the more tangible goals that students should see, you know, within the next, you know, academic school year.
You know, I'd like to add on, on that part, too, is that, yes, a student will know, our students will know if this, our goals have been successful, if when they leave, they feel they are prepared for the next step in their lives. And I would say from an immediate standpoint for you, I would hope that when we ever are able to get back in the classrooms, that every student will maybe say, you know what? It was a welcoming experience coming into my school today, so that you feel from the very beginning, I'm wanted in this place.
President Wilkerson, you're muted.
It's going to be really important that students respond to students' surveys, that they have their parents respond, because we're going to be evaluating a lot of the work on the guardrails based upon the kind of feedback that we get from students, teachers, and parents in the surveys. We're going to be asking people, you know, do you feel safe in your school? Tell us about bullying. I mean, a lot of the things that will help us evaluate whether or not the superintendent and the people in the district are taking seriously the kinds of things that we've established as, as guardrails, the way that we want to see schools operate in Philadelphia. So keep your eye out for those surveys because they're going to help us measure whether or not the district is doing the work it's supposed to be doing.
Okay, thank you. We have a few more questions coming in through the Q and A. This one is specifically about, for, from college-bound students. So for college-bound students, is there anything that we can say now about how this will change specifically for college-bound students? What this will change for college-bound students?
So can you repeat that question? I'm not sure who's, who was slated to answer that.
I think this is a question for everyone, but the question is, what will this change, if anything, specifically for college-bound students?
So, so again, the goal is that the Philadelphia high school degree gains a reputation for meaning that you are truly qualified for career or college. So we want to raise the, again, the raise the level, raise the bar, so that when you graduate from the Philadelphia school system, employers and colleges know this is a well-trained individual. This is a student that had a well-rounded worldly education that's second to none is our, that's our ultimate goal.
I'd say for the college bound also, as Dr. McLoughan said, in terms of you being able to be not seen as, we took in so many of them, but because they want you. But the other piece is, too, is that you will know whether or not that you are capable, and what we hope then we will see, a reduction, and unfortunately, a lot of our young students go to college, but our finish rate is not as good as it should be. And hopefully, that will mean that as, because you're better equipped, you're going to be in a better position to be able to succeed in your college studies and continue it through a four-year process, if that's your desire.
And I think the, the one thing that needs to be recognized, that this is a big difference in how the board has functioned from the past, that we are shifting to look every time we meet at how students are doing, and are we changing those numbers? Are we moving students along? And, and that is, that's huge, that's significant in the way that we are functioning as a governing board. And you should see, we should see that that becomes even more meaningful for students who are going off to college, particularly because we've raised student achievement across the board.
And I think the other thing that people will find different is that we're going to be pressing the district to make sure that students have a lot of different kind of opportunities, opportunities to compete in various areas. And I think it's those kind of experiences that help students build confidence. So when they go away to college, they know that, you know, it's not just the reading, the math, but that they've had exposure to, you know, the arts, exposure to music, exposure to competitions of all kinds. Those are the kinds of experiences that are lacking for too many of our kids that will help them compete more successfully if they go to college.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, why is the board relying on standardized testing to measure achievement? If that's for anyone.
We'll let Angela take that.
I, that's funny that you tossed that to me. So standardized test scores are exactly what they say they are. They're standardized, which means that you can look at them objectively across all different groups of people. And so the data that you looked at, at the beginning of this presentation that Mr. Huang presented about where we were in relation to other school districts who are like us, those are based on standardized test scores. There's no objective way to compare and to look at progress using non-standardized or qualitative techniques. You can use that for some things, but as a way to be able to see in a very objective way how we're moving from school to school as well. be able to see in a very objective way how we're moving from school to school as well. You know, standardized test scores are what we use. I will leave it at that. There are so many other things that indicate student achievement and growth. But this really is the the one objective way that we can see how we are doing in comparison to other other schools and other districts.
It also helps the district figure out what it's doing. Well, it's not so much a measure of the students as it is a measure of whether or not the district, the superintendent, the the, you know, adults within the district are doing what they need to do in order to make to provide students with the kind of education you have a right to expect. And when we ask our questions, it's so that we can make adjustments. You know, if if students aren't learning what they need to learn in order to be successful, we expect the adults to come back and say, well, you know, we thought about it. We've come up with a different strategy. That's how we're going to be using test scores to help the adults at the table figure out what they need to do in order to assure that students across the district are successful.
Okay. Regarding guardrail one, what specific actions are be are being taken to ensure safety in addressing clean and safe schools?
I'm sorry, what was the question? What steps are being taken or what do we have in our goals and guardrails?
No, regarding guardrail, guardrail number one, which is, or I'm sorry, goal number one. No, I'm sorry. Again, guardrail number one, creating welcoming and supportive environments with clean and safe environments and inclusive climates. What specific steps are we taking to ensure that to ensure safety and clean and safe schools?
So there are probably way too many to list. There are, you know, the schools need a host of different things. And we are the board, what the board is doing is, you know, keep raising the issue and pushing the district to assure that every school is clean, safe, et cetera. There is a ton of remediation work being done in regard to asbestos and lead. And we've increased cleaners. I think almost all of our cleaning positions were filled. We expanded our cleaning positions. We increased, you know, pay rates for certain positions to increase the standards. There have been, Dr. Height has made administrative changes to make sure there's more oversight for these things. And the list goes on. That Dr. Height would definitely be better able to answer that question. I don't know if anyone has anything to add to that.
Just say that over the past few years, we've been very mindful of being fiscally prudent, which is to say that we use best practices in how we manage our money. And it's really as simple as that. And one of the positive consequences of that is that when we go out and borrow money, we can borrow it for a lot less because people see that we're being fiscally responsible. Why does that matter? Well, the district has a lot of capital needs and they are long-term in nature. And so they are the sort of thing that you borrow for. And in fact, because of our better credit rating, if you will, we borrowed a half a billion dollars. That's a half a billion dollars with a B. Last year, we approved that as a board and we'll be spending that over the next three years on capital needs throughout the district. And that is going to have a huge effect on the caliber of the buildings in which you all learn in. And I think that's another aspect that I wanted to make sure was part of this question.
I'd like to say, too, that additionally, during this period of time of COVID, while schools have been empty, we have been, the district has been aggressively moving to expand their reach in terms of remediation in the schools of the asbestos of any lead so that there can be more schools that we are not worried about having these conditions. And as Dr. McCogan said, there really have been a lot of steps implemented to begin to ensure that we even have in place the structure that can have better oversight in determining those needs and prioritizing them and addressing them.
I think it's also, I think the question also though raises an important distinction. The board's role is to establish the goals. How those goals are achieved is the work of the superintendent and the people within the district. So the the board will tell the superintendent, we want to see kids reading on grade level. How that's achieved is the work of the superintendent. The superintendent has to take a look at the curriculum. The superintendent has to take a look at things like class size. He's got to figure out, are we spending too much money on this? Not enough on that. So while we set the goals, the actual programming, what your school day looks like, what courses you take, when you take them, that's the work of the superintendent. When we do our monitoring, we're going to be asking him, what did you do to achieve the goals? Are they working for everyone? Who aren't they working for? And what do you intend to do to help students achieve the goals that we've set forth? So we set the goals. We tell them we want clean buildings. We want we want interesting programming for our students. How that's achieved is the work of the superintendent. And you'll be hearing a lot more from Dr. Height in the coming months as he begins putting that programming. He and the teachers and the principals begin putting that programming in place.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, are these goals applicable across the board? Are there any adjustments made for students with with special needs?
That's a that's a very good question. And we have looked at these goals in relation to students with special needs and also our ELL students and where that that falls in. So I don't know if there's anyone who wants to pick up on that because that's a that's a really good question.
Sorry, I got distracted by someone. Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Are these goals applicable across the board for all students? Or are will adjustments be made for students with special needs or ELLs?
Well, again, like Dr. President Wilkinson said a little bit before, our our job as the board is to set the desired parameters and it's the work of the district to carry out the goals. And so children with special needs, they have their individual education plans that need to be met, things of that nature. As we are doing our monitoring, we will be looking at various groups to see if there are disparities amongst groups, across groups, across schools, and any other areas where there might be disparities. But no, our expectation is that we will be raising the bar for all, regardless of race, creed, color, special needs, language, et cetera. So again, these are our goals for all.
I'm going to say at the very end, what we are wanting is for every child to achieve up to the maximum of their potential.
Thank you. To follow up with that and back to the standardized test standardized test scores, are there any actions that are going to be taken to meet the needs of students with with already low standardized test scores?
That's part of the work that the superintendent is going to be doing, that we understand that there are a lot of a lot of students within the district that aren't achieving at grade level. And some of the curriculum work he's working on is helping teachers teach at the grade level, but understand the skill level that students have. So their teachers will be having professional development. There'll be a different curriculum that the just hopefully different curriculum the district will be using, acknowledging where students are right now, but having very high expectations. We we know that our students can excel. And although they may be underperforming right now, our expectation is that the superintendent will be developing curriculum and supports for students so that everyone can achieve at grade level. So I think hopefully that's one of the big differences. We're not going to leave anyone behind. We we're going to have high expectations for all the children in the district. And it's going to be the change, our challenge to the superintendent to make sure that all students reach their fullest potential, no matter where they start out. So I think that's going to be a big difference. We're not going to accept mediocre performance. We're going to have higher expectations for the children in the district supported by the the teachers and the adults in the district.
And when we say all students, we really do mean that. We are going to be monitoring system-wide how performance is, but it's a big system. And so within that, we're going to be getting reports on different grades, different groups, EL, special ed, and we're going to be looking at all those numbers. So it's not acceptable to us if the overall performance is going up, but there are groups that where it's not going up. And so being able to to look at all of that information and hold the superintendent accountable to say, we want all these student groups to be moving in the direction of our goals and asking pointed questions where there are groups that are not on track. The data will show that and we will be able to have a conversation around that. And that sort of structure to our meetings going forward is very important.
Thank you. Next.
It'll also help. It'll also help us figure out how we spend the district's money. So, you know, the one of the big responsibilities the board has is managing the budget. And if if when we see disparities in, you know, between schools, if we need to move money around in order to better support some of the students in schools that are underperforming, we're going to use the monitoring tool as a way of reallocating resources so that we're not leaving students behind because they're not adequate resources.
Thank you. The next question is, are these goals and guardrails for charter schools also?
Joyce, do you want to take that? You're you're on mute.
They're not they're not direct directly applicable to charter schools. So the board has a very different function with respect to charter schools. We have, we say, okay, you know, you submitted an application. You can open a charter school. We can go to a charter school and say, you're not delivering, you know, you're not managing your money well. The students aren't learning. And so we can take away a charter. What we can't do is the kind of month-by-month monitoring, you know, so we don't have, they may not have the same goals and guardrails. They may, you know, we can't ask them in a very pointed way, well, what are you going to do to make it make things different? Hopefully, part of what will happen is we'll change the conversation for charter schools as well. Too many charter schools are not delivering a quality education for their students. And hopefully, when families across the city hear what the kinds of questions that are being asked for traditional Philadelphia schools, they'll begin asking the same kinds of questions for their charter schools. As we drive our academic performance up, we think it'll become more competitive for the charter schools. So we think there's going to be an indirect effect. We don't have the same ability, though, to establish goals, establish guardrails and monitor charter schools as directly. Hopefully, that answers some of the question.
Okay, thank you. The next question. Have you considered how this will be different during or after COVID, particularly guardrail two about after-school and co-curricular activities?
That's a that is a very good, very good question. And it's something that we talk about all the time because this is a moving target. We think we are going back to school. We think we will be able to get students back in and then things close. And we know that the that those activities are really critical, particularly for students, just well-being and mental well-being. And so so I wish and maybe some of the board members could could chime in here that we had a really solid, clear answer about how we are going to address this during COVID and after. It's just it's a moving target. Board members, I don't know if there's a better answer for that. I know that each school is working individually.
Yeah, I'm not sure that there is a better answer other than that is a moving target. This, the reason this virus has the name novel coronavirus is because it's new. And even federal and international agencies don't always have all the answers because, again, it's a new virus. And we are seeing an incredible surge right now. The district has been making really every effort, a Herculean effort, to get children, to get all of you children back to school because we know that's where you need to be. We know that if it is safe from a health standpoint, that it is the healthiest place for you to be, to grow and thrive. However, your our physical safety has to come first. And right now, the decision was made to hold off on going back to in-person instruction because the levels are, you know, the highest we've seen. The virus is probably more contagious than it has ever been. We're seeing surges because of various social events and the holidays. And again, it's a moving target. And we are, we promise you, we are doing everything we can to get you back into schools as soon as safely possible.
If I could add a couple of things, one is that our expectations is that students can and should still thrive. And we have to work harder to put you in a position to do that because of all the challenges of remote and 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 the uncertain and scary times that we're in. We acknowledge that it's a struggle. Guess what? Sometimes the real world is a struggle, but the real world still expects you to succeed, still expects you to thrive. And we're going to uphold those high expectations and hold Dr. Height and his team accountable to putting you guys in the best position possible to succeed. And again, sometimes that's how the real world works. It doesn't grade on a curve. It doesn't always give you leeway. And so we are, for example, practically, we didn't make any adjustments in the goals for for this school year. We expect that the progress that we're looking for is going to happen, even if we're going to have to work harder to create the the climate for that. So so that would be one way that I would answer the question. The other way is that, you know, and going off of what President Wilkinson was saying was that this that this is on Dr. Height to figure out, we've really been pressing him to stay in touch, as he has been, with with charter schools, with other large urban school districts. COVID is really hard to work through, but it also creates this platform for us to experiment with technology platforms that may we may very well continue to use to great effect from a student achievement standpoint, from an equity standpoint, well after we've defeated COVID. And now is the time to experiment and learn for the benefit of figuring out what that looks like on the other side of COVID. So we've really been pressing Dr. Height to stay in touch with his colleagues in around the region and around the country so that we can learn as much as possible and implement and retain those things even after people are back into the buildings.
I think that's one of the, I think the technology is one of the really exciting things that that might emerge from from the whole COVID experience. I know Kailash and Tolu were able to participate in on panels with board representatives, student board representatives from across the country. It's something that we may not have thought of to do before we had this experience having to rely on technology and Zoom. And one of our challenges is as a city is going to be able is going to be figuring out what actually works better. What what other kinds of experiences can we make available to students just because we all now have Chromebooks? Everybody has access to technology, you know, so we've got to make sure that this doesn't end up being just two years of despair that we we identify what has really worked better.
Yeah, I was going to kind of say about the same thing that in terms of, I think the clearly, there can't be the physical, the true physical interactions, unfortunately. We can't go to the theaters right now. But what I think it is, one good thing is making us do and and will allow us to do if this COVID piece just continues on is sharing better partnerships with groups out in the community who now are also thinking creatively and are creating experiences on their webs that really can help fill a lot of the voids, particularly in the arts. And so I think that while it looks gloom, I think there is a lot of potential. And then, of course, yes, we do. I'm a I am a big football fan. I love sports. So I am looking forward to the day when we can say, hey, they can really play. They can really get into the sports, whatever it may be from soccer or whatever it is. But until then, But um, until then, we've just got to be more, um, the district rather, I'm sure will be more focused on how do they augment uh, for this period?
Great. Thank you for that. Another question, um, what is the role of parents and families with regard to the, the goals and guardrails?
Well, first part of the question again, I'm sorry. What is the?
And I, I just want to say this, that um, that one, we are posting these guardrails and we're going to be reviewing them at our board meetings because we want parents to truly be informed about what they should expect from their schools for their children. And to be able to go in and ask the questions. Uh, and to be able to also hold their child, their student yeah, responsible for getting done their part in the process so that it can work, because it is a partnership. And so in that regard, we want them to one, be advocates for this, their child at the school. To be cognizant of what it is my child is supposed to be getting. And then to ensure that the partnership is whole, to ensure that their uh, child is a full participant in that process.
May I add that, you know, there is, every year the school district does a survey and they survey teachers, they survey students, they survey parents, they survey staff. And in the past, we've gotten reports on this survey, but it, they, they haven't informed a lot of work for the board. And now those responses from parents, those responses from students are what we are looking at to ensure that we are providing the kind of environments, the safe and inviting spaces for our children to attend. So parents' voice has a really big place in the conversation simply because we're asking those questions and we're, 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 we want to know. And so to the extent that parents are able to and willing to um, uh, respond and participate, it, it will have a big impact on the, what, the decisions that we make around schools and providing the kinds of learning environments that we want to see student achievement. Joyce, you're on mute.
One of, one of the, thank you. One of the guardrails we have talks about family engagement. And it came as a result of meetings we had with our parent and community advisory council. And so we're going to be measuring the extent to which the district really does create a welcoming environment for families and community members. Um, we can't succeed just, you know, if we remain isolated from the broader community. If parents don't feel that schools are places that they're welcome, um, where they can feel welcome. So we're going to be tracking that. We're going to be asking questions about that. Making sure that families and, and parents across the district feel that our schools are someplace that, where they can um, participate actively.
Okay, thank you so much. We, we have three minutes left and so we're going to move to the last question. And this one is uh, specifically for the student board reps. And the question is, how do students become student board reps?
Um, okay, I'll take this. Uh, so this is a one, like school year term position. I'm me and Kailish are really honored and blessed to have this, really great one. So in the spring of 2021, they'll be on a school leadership website, an application and like how you can go about it. But even before that, me and Kaylee should be sending out an email district-wide to all the students on whether you want to apply or if you think this position would be right for you. And so look forward to that. But for now, it's our position and we're gonna, you know, suck it in. But yeah, look forward to that in the spring.
You want to talk about the process you went through after you, after you filled out the application, what happened?
Okay, so after, for me personally, I filled out the application, I contacted for an interview. So I was interviewed by Mr. Tyler Wims. He's the student leader for FATHMZ with all students. He interviewed me and the former student board representative interviewed me. Um, me and Kaylee should have picked from thirty-five, thirty-five students to apply, that's two, so that we did pretty well with that. Um, so yeah, don't be scared of the interviews. They're really nice people. And if I'm interviewing or Kailish is interviewing you, we're really nice people. We're not going to scare you off. Just be calm, relaxed and just tell us why you would think this would be the right position for you and what you would do to make sure your student voice is heard.
Thank you so much. Okay, with that, uh, it is, we have one minute left. So to be honor, to be, to honor everyone's time, we're going to close. I'm going to pass it back to Tolu to close us.
Okay, thank you very much for joining us today to talk about this important new focus from the board. As student board representatives, our number one focus will always be on ensuring that our voices are heard throughout any process, but especially processes that directly impact our academic experiences. We are excited about this new direction and to continue this conversation with you. Additionally, if you are interested in learning more about the work that Kailish and I are doing, please follow us on Instagram at PHL Student Reps. If you are interested in applying to be a student board representative for next school year, you can learn more about that on the school district's website. If you have other comments or questions on goals and guardrails, please email us at studentboardrep@phillasd.org. Thank you again, everyone, and we hope you have a good night.
Thank you. Take care. Stay safe.
Thank you. Good job, students.